Good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this, the Phil Brandon Town Council meeting of Monday the 11th of December 2024. And guess what? It's the last one this year, isn't it? So we all, we really enjoyed this one. Um, as usual, if you hear the fire alarm in the unlucky event, there's fire exits front and rear at the back, uh, do not use the lid. Um, and, uh, those that need it, we do have trained people on the attack chair. Um, could I ask everybody to ensure that things that go beep and ring are hardened to get turned off? You, you still need yours or?
I'd say plastic.
Okay, um. We are live streaming, but if you don't want, if anybody in the audience doesn't like, well, you won't be in the picture anyway because the camera points that way. You hear the same old rubbish from me every button. So we will get on with the agenda. Item number one, apologies for absence and approval of reasons intended.
The only apologies we have are from councillor and councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, councillor, yeah. Things off in semi blind. Um, declarations of interest and additions to the members' register of interest. Um, the book is there. Um, if there are any interests or additions, if you could make it up, it's how we actually manage the, uh, uh, interests, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. To receive a report, number three, to receive a report from squadron leader Eaton. Um, unfortunately, the good squadron leader is not present, but his report is in your packs. So we'll take it that you've got that. Item number four is to receive, confirm and sign the minutes of the Brandon Town Council meeting of Monday the 11th of November 2024. Uh, could I have a composer please? Thank you, Mr. Sam, seconded, could we have a show of hands on that list? Oh, mate, looks at unanimous tonight. Number five, uh, matters arising for information only, exchange only of the full council meeting of the 11th of November. I have none, nobody's brought anything to me, so we're swiftly going on to item number six.
On number four, would they ask us to be a partner, Brandon Town Council?
Sorry?
On number four.
Number four.
We had a presentation from that Lick Dits again, natural environment manager, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, asking Brandon to become a partner.
Oh.
A song for this month.
Yeah.
Yeah, sort of the agenda for this month.
For the decision.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Right. Where was I? Number six, the chairman's report, I have written a report, which is in your packs. I would like to say though, um, about our Christmas fair, which was absolutely stunning and one of the olds was sat right next to you.
Three of them.
Three of them, yeah. Um, and I'd just like to thank, it was far too many people that were involved in it, our own town keepers, our own staff and outside bodies, that makes it such a wonderful event. I personally have never seen, it's just growing, I've never seen so many people there. Um, and it makes Brandon really punch above its weight in the town categories. And I'm sure it was much appreciated by many people in the town too. So that's in my report, but I just wanted to mention that. Um, we will move swiftly on to item number seven, which is the public forum meeting, uh, which will, maybe will be adjourned to allow a period of 15 minutes for members of the public to speak. Uh, they're limited to three minutes duration for residents and it will only be items on the agenda that I discuss. If you ever have any other items that you wish to bring, do write into the office to our town car a few days beforehand that you can then process that. As always, I will start, uh, with, uh, reports from our county councillor, councillor Lu Canic.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got several things to report. Um, and firstly, Caden Gas have eventually landscaped that piece of amenity area on the Thetford Road there, and they have given me assurance it won't happen again. But that was some battle, I can assure you of that. Uh, the second thing, Mr. Chairman, is the folding bollards have gone in into the avenue and I haven't had any complaints on that. Uh, I've had some positive comments on that and I'll just remind councillors that is so that the tradesmen or the arborists can go in the avenue with their vehicles. Um, so I'm gonna put two more bollards in, uh, two more folding bollards in, in the top half of the avenue, the western half of the avenue. And as we have got a resolution on for that, um, previous, previous resolution, so they will go in as soon as possible. Um, uh, as I said, the second, the, the top end of that, that's, that, that'll stop the tradesmen crudely cutting through the chain link fence to get into the avenue. I mean, what they done there was awful. So with the folding bollards, Mr. Chairman, that will cease, hopefully. Um, thirdly, Mr. Chairman, I have persuaded Suffolk County Council, Suffolk Highways, to perhaps consider a quote from local tradesmen for the banisters on the bridge. Uh, that took a bit of persuading and the first thing what came to my mind was to use a skilled, a skilled joiner in Brandon. He may be, uh, he may be in a position to quote for this, so I'll hand this over to Sam Skinner, a cabinet maker and joiner extraordinaire. So if you need any help with that later on, I'll talk to you on that.
Yes, let's have a chat.
Yeah, we'll have a chat for that.
Sort of that out.
Um, I do have, uh, a couple of items here and I will briefly whisper them. The aggregate facility on Wangford Road, they are beginning to decommission that site. Uh, they've, they've been operating up there, we all know they've been operating up there without any planning permission, so we will monitor that. Uh, they've got some heavy, heavy machinery to remove from the site, which will need police escort, but that is, uh, that is in their hands, not our hands. And one final joyous word, uh, Chairman, is that a really salubrious picnic table was delivered to Brandon this afternoon and I think you were witness to it and you, and you helped, you helped with the, with the unloading and the positioning of that. Um, hopefully that's an indestructible one, that weighs over a tonne of solid concrete. Um, but that remains to be seen, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and that, as in the orchard.
In the orchard, on that concrete pad.
Okay.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I should move on to district.
No, I think councillor Lu Canic covered hadn't, because, uh, did you quote that they might, um, land, they didn't say landscape, but they put earth down, haven't they?
They pushed the top.
And the highways department were up there this morning leveling it all out.
That's good.
Um, yeah, so really, it's kind of what I was gonna say.
All right, well, um, I have nothing from district except that we are busy awaiting the government white paper of devolution. And to see whether it happens, how it will affect town, district and town councils, uh, which it certainly will. But anything at this stage is purely conjecture until we actually see the white paper and even then it can be changed and it's only when it becomes stamped as law that we'll know the full impact. Um, town councillors, any reports from town councillors? Not community, community group representatives? No, okay, I'm correct, I look at the public in the gallery. Mrs. Meadows.
I think I'm going to do that. Um, I'm really puzzled with a couple of these things. Uh, number 15 and 16 on your agenda, HGV traffic from parts of Brandon and the parts of Brandon High Street, Park London Road and Rappers Road. I thought that there was something in place with the whole of lorries, I would live to believe. And a previous, I don't miss council meeting, it was, but some time ago. So what's happened there? Because lorries are still coming through.
Yeah.
And I don't think you can really do very much about it unless you go for a bypass. Now, there was previously a councillor who used to sit around this table who was actually dealing quietly behind the scenes about a bypass. Perhaps if you talk to that person, you may find out how far that person got before things happened. But the other thing I'd like to ask is, on your accounts for November 2024, BM Tree Contractors put in nine trees, Victoria Avenue, nine thousand five hundred and ten pounds, an removal of a tree, three hundred and forty-two. Is that just a top part that they were doing?
Yes.
To me, that is an awful lot of money for a few trees. If it was the whole lot, then yeah, I'd expect something that sort of pricked a little bit more. But for just those few, no, I thought that was very expensive. That's all I've got to say, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Well, I'll answer a couple of those and then I'll pass over to councillor Lu Canic and councillor Bland on one of them. Um, bypass, there ain't no money, there ain't foreseeably any money. The, uh, I'm, by the way, I'm, uh, 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 on the Transport East, is, uh, can't remember what I'm called now.
Representative for West Suffolk.
Representative for West Suffolk. Um, they have been fighting for Hawley and Ely rail stations to be upgraded, which would make a huge difference to trade in East Anglia. With the new government, all their work over the last four or five years has gone straight out of the window and we were back to square one. Um, as you know, the government are saying there is no money and they're taxing us because of it. So a bypass, not gonna happen in my lifetime and I've had it will in sounds. So moving over to the, um, uh, aggregate facility that operates out of the, uh, rail station, I'll hand over to councillor Lu Canic and councillor Bland for an answer on that one.
Yeah, just a, an update on the condition two for the planning permission for that. As you rightly said, there is a, there is a, that condition is to restrict the lorries through the town. Um, they're supposed to turn out and go back out to the, uh, the A11. That is still underway and is still being monitored by Norfolk, uh, planning enforcement. It has got to be put in place. Um, uh, but at the moment, there is, there's not been an acceptable traffic management plan. So for, for Norfolk, it's a, it's a work in progress, but it is a condition that's enforceable if it's not sorted.
My own response.
Yeah.
Would be enforcing that?
Norfolk, Norfolk, it is, it's a Norfolk planning application. So Norfolk planners have put the conditions in place. So they're currently monitoring and they're currently working with the rail company, not the, not Hawley, to, uh, agree a traffic management plan that prevents the traffic coming through Brandon and the surrounding villages.
But they're still coming through?
They're, but, well, it's been confirmed that until that condition is, is signed off and the traffic management plan's agreed, um, they're still able to drive through the town. Until that condition is, is lifted, um, to a point, they're, they're, they're able to do it.
Councillor Lu Canic?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, good question, Annette. Um, the HGV restriction at the station has got nothing to do with that HGV what's mentioned in the agenda. I know very little about what's been mentioned in the agenda. All I can tell you is that the condition at the station as yet hasn't been ratified, which is what Mr. Bland has told you. That is yet to be accepted. But once that's accepted and the management plan is in place, that will be enforced. That's a planning condition for that company. They, they haven't ratified it, but I do believe that our clerk is on first name terms with Andrew Harris, who's the chief planning officer at Norfolk County Council. And the, the clerk did say she would have words with him, so I don't know whether our clerk has made any progress on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is that okay, Annette?
Yes, uh, probably the other thing I mentioned on the accounts, but.
Um, yes, the trees, um, are done in three stages now over a three-year period because that's what the tree officer said we have to do. Half of the cemetery, was it? Half?
Four year.
Sorry?
Four year.
Yeah. Half of the cemetery, then the other half of the cemetery, then the west end of the, um, avenue and then the east end. And that is the price we were quoted and was accepted four years ago by this council. So it's probably, although it looks a lot, it's probably cheaper than it would be now if we were getting quotes. That's an awful lot of work, an awful lot of machinery and quite a few men. Um, and as for the tree that was felled, they found that that one, and I've brought it to this table several months ago, that it was unsan and it was again, um, unsan. They found it unsan, you could move it with your fingers. It was felled, it was rotten from bottom to top. We have photographs of that actually, if you want proof on that one. So there we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the public gallery? Mrs. Annette?
I, I'd just like to confirm what you said and say, well, one for Christmas, it was, you know, celebration it was. And I'd like to, uh, praise the members of staff at the town council for all their hard work. They got here on Saturday, Jack was here before me and left after me, so, and that was most of the day. So thank you very much to all the staff and what, and what a credit it is to Brandon, to the council. Council should be very lucky they've got such good workers who work together.
Absolutely, well said, yeah, well said. Nobody else? Well, it is the public.
I'm the public, I pay my council tax.
Sure.
I'm retired to speak.
Are you really going to tell something, remember the public?
Sorry?
You're either a councillor or a member of the public at the meeting, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, so you're, you're a member of the public at the moment?
That's right.
No, you can't.
No, you can't, you're either a councillor at the meeting or a member of the public, can't be both.
Yeah, so.
I'm a member of the public. When you've adjourned the, adjourned the council meeting and you're asking for the public to speak, I'm on the electoral list, I pay my council tax, I'm a member of the public.
No, and you were.
When you've returned to council meeting back to normal.
Councillors had anything to say and you didn't. So does this mean that when we go below the line, you'll be leaving because you're acting as a member of the public tonight?
Did you just say, sorry?
When we go into confidential, will you be leaving to, before that part of the meeting? Because you're now a member of the public.
I'm a member of a public because it's the public section.
Doesn't work like that, Peter. Sorry?
Well, point of order, Chairman, because Peter Ridgwell has always been allowed to speak in the public forum. And the public forum is open to the public. Uh, let's not get, let's not get bogged down in detail here, right? I think it's a surreal state if we can't allow a councillor who's been on the chair, on the camp for 25 years, a short question. If you can't allow in three minutes in the public forum, I think this council is degenerated into an absolute mess.
I should also say that point of order should actually be noted against the standing orders it refers to. But anyway, so, um, the councillors were asked if they wanted to make a comment and the councillor didn't. Therefore, in this situation, as I totally agree with councillor Lu Canic, there's no point in messing around and becoming petty. So therefore, should the chairman wish to allow you to ask a question? And I don't see that solution.
On this one occasion, I will, Peter, but in future, when I ask around the cha, uh, uh, table, um, for, um, tac, tacit, town councillors, we had county report, we had district report, town councillors, and you stayed quiet. And that would have been your point to speak. But if it was to ask questions, it's not the right venue. The point is that you would give a report on the activities that you have done on behalf of the council for the month. And I'm afraid a lot of this comes down to the fact that the council meetings used to go on three, three hours or more, because there was just a lot of hot air that took us nowhere. We're here to deal with the business for the town. On this one occasion, I'll allow you to speak. But in future, I won't. You're either a councillor or a member of the public.
I think you're wrong. Anyway. Regarding this Victoria Avenue with the trees, you, you've got it in four sections, you say. Which of the sections did they prune? Because so was down at the church end and it looks as though they'd done the trees that end. And I hear that you're doing the trees, the east end. So could you verify where these trees were pollarded for that money in place?
The east end of the avenue.
Well, they looked as though, as I said, the church end had been done. They only had a few stubs.
Hmm?
The gum didn't ones last year to me.
They did, they lost you.
So they don't grow very much then?
Ah, Chairman.
Councillor Lu Canic?
Pete, that, good question. They pollarded the trees last week from the crossing, where the big houses are, from the crossing.
Yeah, where the passports.
From there, eastwards, right to the craft cabin. So I should imagine, I'm, I'm gonna hazard a guess, um, I should think there's well over a hundred trees there. So it's from the bank manager's house.
Yeah.
Right to the craft cabin and both sides of the road, both sides of the avenue, except for the little piece, uh, where the cinema was.
Short, uh, short lives. That's quite a lot of money for that short life.
Yeah, that.
Councillor Lu Canic, you agreed this amount of money four years or three years ago, was it?
Can I answer that one?
Yes, please, Sam.
So, taking my memory back now, Pete, so what we've done, when that quote come in, because we used to have round this table an argument for hours, we had an agreement that we would get it done for the four years, which is what the tree officer said. There was a total price and it was divided by four. For some years they've done more trees for the money and some years they have done less trees. That's how it was done. But we just sort of, whatever that quote is, it was divided by four and then that amount will be paid each year. So when is the, uh?
For the whole of Victoria Avenue, in theory, will cost forty thousand pounds.
So for the whole of the, all them trees, all them trees, yeah.
Lot of money.
Hmm, it is a lot of money, okay. At that point, I'm gonna close this conversation down and we will move on to item number eight, which is correspondence. Um, we have Brandon in Bloom request for agreement for a new planted area.
Yeah.
Uh, could you enlighten us on that one, King, please?
So basically, it's a new planting area on the B1107 green area of the junction with Green Road and Thetford Road. They have discussed the application with West Suffolk, Mark Walsh and John Brantford and they're both in agreement with the plans. A wide grass area would be left around there to allow the ease of grass cutting, which will be continued in the grass cutting later. The plants would be mostly recycling perennials and grasses that are currently planted in the wedge. Um, they are happy to provide a fullness of species should the councillors want those. And the maximum height of the plant would be sixty centimetres. So that would, um, allow to be within the highways restriction for the visibility on the visit parlor's junction. And they have three volunteers who have come forward and will be maintaining, uh, this bed and it is a low maintenance bed. Um, so, uh, but as part of the application going to highways, they need consent from the parish council to approve their plans. So that's what they requested. They'll remove the three blue, um, entrance boxes on Berry Road, Thetford Road and London Road as they've been situated for a number of years and have rotten. And although they retain the license, they would wish to put new planters in that area in the future.
Councillor Lu Canic?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I will declare an interest here because I am a volunteer with Brandon in Bloom, but I am surprised this has come to Brandon Town Council. Brandon Town Council has got no jurisdiction at all on that piece of the land. And no, we won't oppose her, we'll support her, you know, we know what.
Councillor Lu Canic, it's already been said, would you like to repeat?
I haven't finished, I don't wanna get interrupted, she put her hand up, okay, I was in halfway through a conversation.
I interrupted you and what you were saying has an answer.
You shouldn't have interrupted me, I mean, if we're actually concerned about what's going on at the Thetford Road, why don't we get the, uh, the bus shuttle painted, which is in your wall, which we've been waiting for over a year.
Can I ask you to stop?
No, I haven't, I haven't finished, right, I haven't finished. I think it's rude on your behalf, absolutely. Um, of course, we, we're not gonna oppose this, but all I'm trying to say is we've got no jurisdiction up the Thetford Road on that piece of the meeting ground. That's a Suffolk County council thing and I, I don't oppose it. In fact, I approve it because Brandon and Bloom have done some great stuff around the town and long that continue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Lu Canic, would you like to repeat what was said?
Yeah, uh, the reason they're asking us this is actually on the application form for the license that they have to approve from the parish or town council.
That's the reason why. So I take it that you would like to, uh, propose this, would you, Councillor Lu Canic?
Well, is this a resolution or not? Because it's not a resolution on the agenda, we haven't got a proposal.
It does says request for a room that's been planted earlier, so.
Is this, is this a resolution, Chair, or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, why haven't we got a resolution number and a proposer on this? It looks like it's just a discussion. Have we changed our system here without us knowing? Is this a resolution, yes or no? If it's not a resolution, why isn't it? Why haven't we been informed?
It's a request for agreement.
It is a request for agreement.
That's bizarre, that.
And you are proposing agreement?
I'll proposer.
Right, do I have a second? Thank you very much.
Well, in.
Can we put it to the vote?
Yeah, couldn't in future, could we have this?
Could we put it to the vote, please? Thank you.
In, in.
Right, okay, thank you, Councillor Lu Canic.
In future, Chairman, can we have this as a resolution instead of a, a rather vague, a rather vague?
It was for approval, not a resolution. How many more times does it have to be explained? Thank you. Item number nine, accounts to approve payments for November 2024, who I have a proposer. Thank you, councillor Skinner. Senator, councillor Bland, could I have a show of hands, please? Those in favour?
Chair, I'd like to comment on these hands.
Uh, you didn't put your hand up.
I'd like to comment on the accounts, Chair.
Commenting on the accounts.
You never ask the public whether they want to comment on the accounts.
Commenting on the accounts, councillor Lu Canic, you don't, you do so in the office prior to the meeting.
And if I may, Chairman, all last week, the office was shut and I got my agenda late, so I think this is a good time to ask questions about the finances.
Excuse me, can I mention, say something here? Mr. Lu Canic, I find that very offensive.
What is offensive?
What you've just said, the council was shut nearly all of next week, it was extending.
Last week, not next week, last week.
Last week, yes. So, and Donna, out of the goodness of her heart, came in two mornings to work. Poor Jackie, she's doing work outside her, on her holiday.
Point of order, Chairman, that's not really relevant, right?
But it is, you're, you're insulting.
If this continues, I will close this meeting, councillor Lu Canic.
Well, I've got two questions I wanna ask about the finances.
I do not allow them. We will go to the vote, those in favour? Thank you. Abstentions. One. Against. One. Thank you. Item number 10, to receive income and expenditure statement against budget for October 2024. It is in your packs and we take it that it has been received. Item number 12, to note minutes of the planning committee, it's in your pack, so we will have received it. Item number 13, to agree Brandon Town Council's participation in Britain Landscape Partnership activities, including the use of a meeting room. We had a. We had a very nice presentation by the gentleman whose name excuse me, uh whose meeting was the most, ni- 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 this is the. Uh, the last meeting and we said that we'd get back to him within the, the, the time scale. Um, and this is what this is about and I will allow our town clerk to present.
So, um, I hope you remember quite a lot about what um was spoken to us last time. But basically, um, the landscape partnership is moving forward and it's not easy for the council to take a lead role alongside other local authorities in the steering, the strategic objectives and priorities for the delivery of a wider range of outputs, including relating to permanent seal prioritization, deliveries, evaluation of biodiversity netting, Rams, NSIP education, in line with the Norfolk and Suffolk local natural recovery strategy aspirations. Promoting best practice for housing development and agriculture, community engagement, health and wellbeing, education and training opportunities. Supporting visitor economy in collaboration with the new visit, local visitor economy partnership for Norfolk and Suffolk. Supporting heritage and landscape con- uh conservation efforts through new external funding and private finance opportunities and developing the Brex identity as a nationally important landscape for biodiversity and heritage. So what they are asking for is um Brandon TC to uh join the partnership um with appropriate representation uh representation and officer support to contribute to proper oversight and governance and support some working group activities and to ask if they could use the council chamber as a meeting room with other organizations such as uh the Environment Agency, Natural England, the Norfolk and Suffolk Wildlife, the Rivers Trust uh free of charge as a um in-kind uh funding to the partnership. They're not actually asking for any money.
I think it's a no-brainer. I would recommend that we accept this and join. Councillor of the Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't think I'm the only one who's confused about what this is all about. Um, we had a presentation last month and uh it was uh, it was, I'm not convinced that uh, I'm not convinced what we, I have no idea what we're getting and I'm not convinced it's not gonna cost us anything. But let's go back about ten years. These are the people, it's a similar scheme about ten years ago and it was called Breaking New Ground. Some of you might remember. And the same people what I do in this scheme were in Breaking New Ground. Um, they got a hundred and fifty thousand pound national lottery money for Brandon. And I attempted to get some of that money and I diverted it into the, some of the Flint Walls, the one down the Bingo Hall and one down the Manor. Uh, anyway, it came to nothing. I couldn't get any money for that. All that money was spent on the engine room at Brandon Country Park. That's owned by the Forestry Commission, that's now leased out to West Suffolk Council and they've got their ranger in there. That's where the money went. To the engine room at Bran- Brandon Country Park. Then what came along was another scheme by the same people and it was called Brex, Fen Edge and Rivers Landscape Scheme. And we never got a penny from them. Once again, Brandon was left out. In fact, these people, they're just finishing that scheme and they're having a bash in Thetford Friday and they're all gonna congratulate themselves, see how well they done. There's nothing before us, there's no figures, it's vague. And there's this, and if, and if they want, if they want a room, because they want half of, there is a really nice room at the engine, in the engine room at Brandon Country Park, if they want a room, although we're not allowed to go up there. We're not, we haven't got access to that, but they spent a hundred and fifty thousand pound up there. Um, we don't know enough about this scheme, there's nothing on the table, there's no figures. If anybody's really confident about this and they understand it, please step forward. Um, and uh they've known about what we need in this town.
Finish in one sentence.
They've known about the launch, the canoe launch, ten years ago, nothing's been done. And they know about the barriers as well and nothing's been done about that. There's nothing in this for us and I can't support it.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so the previous two partnerships that have been referred to were actually national lottery uh funded partnerships. Now, I'm, I'm sure that some of you know about national lottery. And what happens is we have to put the projects forward for national lottery and national lottery then agree those projects. So you're not actually allowed to spend outside of what is agreed on that project. So all those projects have got forward and the Brandon one, what happened in Brandon on BFIR, which was the um fish launch, was six hundred thousand pounds worth of development by the EA, which is part of the Brex, Fen Edge, Rivers Landscape Partnership Scheme. So that was all of the things that's happened there and there have been walks and things in the town, but you know, it's by the by. So, um, the reason that any projects that came up within that time weren't actually carried out was because they were not identified originally when the funding went in for the project, because only the mind of the projects that were put in for the funding and agreed can be done within national lottery. The new Brex Landscape Partnership is not lottery funded and is therefore not bound by the rules and regulations and the demographics that lottery asks people to go for. So how they are working this is they are getting, um, they're not asking for money bills or anything that they need from Brandon Town Council in that unit. How this is being funded is our organizations are part funding posts for certain outcomes so that it is a sustainable model that can last uh ten years plus. And therefore people aren't struggling around, but probably one of the greatest things that would come of us would be for the housing and for the ability for them to help us in funding bids and for us to be part of a greater partnership so that we could show that things were happening within the town and that we were being part of those things being developed. So it isn't a big thing. You're not gonna get a bypass out of it. You're not gonna get anything like that because there isn't that sort of money available, unfortunately, as the chair has said. But what it will do is it will bring things into the town, hopefully, or boost the visitor economy as well. But there will be um health and wellbeing, education events. Um, it will hopefully develop a sense of place for both the built and the natural um heritage of Brandon. That will help lift up the image of Brandon, get Brandon on the map, get people noticing it. And also having all those agencies arrive in Brandon, using our building, means that we're walking around your town, looking at your problems and the things that can be done here. And it's really an opportunity to um put Brandon on the map and, and the councillor is correct. There's no, no, um, no money to put in front of you that I can't give you any budget funds and that because if they are available, I don't have them. Um, but uh yes, it's basically just an opportunity for the town and in particular the town council to be involved in the development of these projects from the first time in years.
Councillor Seba.
Um, from what I can see, and I could actually read out a more on this. It, it was, the worst thing that's gonna happen is we don't gain anything from it, but we haven't lost anything from it.
Yeah.
Hmm.
But it will get us noticed. We all sit around this table and we complain that we are the forgotten town, Suffolk, et cetera, et cetera. If we can make three allies that are gonna, out of all of it, that are gonna help us be noticed and maybe push even one project, sure, if it's not, if it's gonna cost us a meeting room, I'll provide the space at least if it comes to it. If it's, if that's all it's gonna cost us and a bit of our time, it doesn't seem like a bad idea to me. We're not gonna lose anything. And I understand what Councillor Luca was saying about not getting funding from the previous things, but I'm in the middle of dealing with the lottery and it's honestly, it's like reading arrogant backwards to a mirror. It's ridiculous. So, I get where you're coming from, though. I just, I, from what I've seen, from what I've read, even looking at what they've done in Thetford. If we got a little bit of that, it could, and we're not gonna lose anything. So for me, I think it's a, I think it's the way forward, honestly. Like I say, if we can make a few friends outfit and they help us along the way, then let's take it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Luca Nick, you've already spoken on this.
Does this go to a vote, Chairman?
It will go to a vote.
Could I have a name vote, Chairman?
You can have a name vote.
Because people can come to us on the same issue. You're not restricted to one, one comment on it, on one issue. People can come back. No, you're not.
And that's my ruling.
I'd gladly propose we accept and go forward with it, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Could I have a name vote, Chairman?
We are not going to uh. Yes, have a recorded vote.
Thank you, Chair.
So the proposer was councillor Skinner?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah.
I am in favour.
So just. Jackie, do you wanna read the list and we'll, we'll run them so it's on the recording? Of the councillors, if you just go around so it's on the recording. Okay, so we start from councillor Gorin. Yeah, you can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, sorry, did we do councillor Seba?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, councillor Seba, councillor Gorin.
Yeah.
Nons for Hughes.
Yes.
Councillor Castecky.
Capstake.
Councillor Blan.
Yeah.
Councillor Richwell.
No.
Councillor Skinner.
Four.
Councillor Chalice.
Yes.
Councillor Luca Nick.
Against.
Councillor Watts.
Yes.
Councillor Sade.
Four.
I'm sorry, councillor Luca Nick.
Four.
Thank you.
You've got all those. Yeah, and Ted.
Gary.
Yeah.
Most of us, thank you. Item number fourteen, to adopt social media policy. It is all in your packs and I trust you have all read it. Um.
I propose we go with it.
Sorry?
I propose we go with it.
Yes, I sent him that.
There you go.
And I'm gonna put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Here now, I must thank very much. Right. Uh. Item number fifteen, application for a traffic regulation order to ban HGV traffic from parts of Brandon. Um, and I will probably lead on that, but it will also, we will, we will be, if you like, probably taking fifteen and sixteen together um on this one.
Sorry.
Number.
I don't remember what we did the century.
We thought you skipped something, Phil. We're so sorry.
Had I?
No.
No.
Oh, good. Wouldn't be unusual for me to do so. Wouldn't be unusual for me to do so. As everybody around this table in the audience and probably everybody in the town knows, we are being bashed to death as a town by heavy goods vehicles. It became far worse when they deal with the A eleven. Because what that did was get rid of the dogleg junction of the old A eleven at Elverden. Prior to that, the HGVs would not come this way so much because they couldn't cross the A eleven safely at Elverden. Now that's gone, they can come blasting through here and tear up Berry Road and the Thetford Road, doing all sorts of mayhem and damage to the edges of the road. And we are being crushed. And I know councillor Luca Nick has figures on the um numbers of uh HGVs coming through. Um, and virtually everybody I speak to in the town, unless they're actually a lorry driver, will be absolutely opposed to them coming through. We can't develop a high street in any valid form because, because it's just not a pleasant place to be when you've got HGVs thundering past. So. Normally, if you go for an HGV, um, uh, uh, which is a traffic regulation order, you need a traffic reg- regulation order. And the only people that can do that are Suffolk highways. Now councillor Luca Nick, myself, councillor Blan, uh previous councillors around this table have been working for years and Suffolk highways do not have the stomach to do it because it will cost. Um, um, in actual fact, some of the figures that they've come out with, like, um, they did a lorry can, at councillor Luca Nick's behest, bequest. Um, and they said, oh, well, eighty percent of the he- heavy goods vehicles coming through Brandon are actually local traffic. Well, anybody that lives in Brandon knows that is complete and utter rubbish. They are not. They're coming from North Norfolk, Lincolnshire, they come right through and they come this way. Um, so having got nowhere with, with, basically with Suffolk highways and on the back of the fact that councillor Luca Nick several years ago put in a, a resolution that Brandon Town Council would support an HGV ban, and it did. Um, but quite a lot of those councillors are no longer here. Here it is again. So do we support in the first one, an HGV ban from parts, in parts of Brandon? Now, let me explain this. We have industries on the west and that away, north east, that require heavy goods to come in, to service them. But they don't have to drive through this bit, round the traffic lights here to do so. Those that end can be serviced from Munford off the A eleven to Munford and here, which is the approved route. The ones in the west can be serviced from Milnor off the A eleven. And five ways round about there, Barn Mills round about. So if we were to put traffic cameras and the ban from the junction of Ratler's Road, right by Tesco's, so that they can get to Tesco's, but they can't go up Ratler's Road and they can't come down the London Road. All the industry can still be serviced that end. Won't make any effect, effect at all on our industry, that end. If we put the next bit by Aldi's entrance, so Aldi, Aldi can get in and out, but they can't come up the high street, job done, job done. So that's basically what I am proposing. It would be. It would be on cameras. Those coming into the town to actually deliver, like Travis Perkins delivering to a building site in the high street, for example, or the carpet shop or what have you, they can register their vehicle with the uh, uh, um, a- authority that looks after the cameras. And it can come in to deliver a, to a specific, a specific store. So it makes sense. We can then have, we can then have a high street that is free of HGVs. What we need to do, because uh, um, is gather the evidence and present a council-wide pack, if you like, to the highways department of Suffolk County Council. I mean, there's no guarantee that we'll get any further, but it's gotta be better than the few individuals. I mean, at one time, it was just councillor Luca Nick, myself and councillor Park, former councillor Park that was doing this. We were doing our own lo- lorry watches and ga- gathering figures. So. If it's a council-wide decision that we go ahead with this, I think our town clerk is perfectly willing and capable to organize what we need to do to present to the highways department. And that's what I'm asking. Councillor Chalice.
Um, can I just read something out to you? Now, I'm not, probably not gonna be very popular by what I say here. But what you're proposing, in, I do understand in some ways, I really do get it. I live on Ratler's Road and I get a lot of lorries come down there. But personally, I find sometimes this has been a bit of a vendetta against a couple of companies in Brandon. And I'm worried about the danger in future of the likes of some of these big companies. Times are hard, as we know. Fuel costs are rising. We're all going on about the environment and the fumes and whatever. The impact for these companies of having to go extra, extra mileage all the way around and all fumes in the atmosphere, well, is it a possibility? And I do feel it is going to be a strong possibility that some of these companies might say to us, we're done, we're done. They're big employers to this town. Whereas I totally agree, like all. Whereas I totally agree, like all these outsiders, you know, coming using us as a cut through. Yes, I agree with that. But I think our local companies should not have to suffer this ban and be given the added cost to their businesses. Businesses already saying they're going to have to make cutbacks because the taxes that the government have just suddenly sprung upon them. Um, you know, I am severely worried about it. Does this include the likes of, um, tractors and trailers? Are they classes in HGV? We get a lot of those come through Brandon, I get them coming up Ratler's Run Road quite often, dropping out onions and their potatoes and everything on the, the road. Does this include, because this doesn't just, this involves Pexniff, Omars, Holbrooks, Lignocite, Matthew Nice's, Timberyard, the other big place that's a bit further down. You know, if all of those decided to pull out of Brandon, the job losses to Brandon would be immense. So I have concerns about this, but I do totally agree about bringing in some kind of ban for HGVs using this as a cut through, but not for local businesses.
Well, thank you for that, very well made point. The actual local businesses that would come through
Yeah.
are minimal and need to come through. Holbrook is in Norfolk, if you're going to name Holbrook. Right, he's Norfolk.
Yeah, I, I did wonder about that.
Once that, once that, um, agreement with Norfolk County Council on the planning condition that he puts in a traffic management plan acceptable to them, if he doesn't and still continues to come through Brandon High Street, they will withdraw his planning application.
Yeah.
And he will not.
But what about like, what about the likes of Lignocite, et cetera? They're Suffolk, they're a big employer.
Yeah, and if they're going to London or, um, anywhere else, it's three or four miles. It is nothing on that journey.
It's not three or four miles though, it's not three or four miles. What, to go to Munford all the way down to Thetford, to then come down the A eleven to Elverdon? That's not four miles. That's not four miles.
No, they go to get on the A eleven and then they're going to London, Southampton, wherever they're delivering their goods.
A lot of difference in mileage for being, coming up the high street and going down there and then going all that way around.
It makes nothing, no difference whatsoever.
I don't agree. It's not four miles, it's a lot more than that.
I won't argue.
No, but.
Councillor Leucanick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if we can perhaps just stick the wuss on the, uh, on the agenda number fifteen and number sixteen. That's traffic regulation orders. That is the title of those two agenda items. Um. Brandon Town Council does not have the jurisdiction and does not have the powers to, to put in place a traffic regulation order. The only people who can do that is Suffolk highways. And we have to convince them that we need an HGV ban. They have not been convinced yet and that has been relayed to Transport East and you sit on Transport East Phil. And, but for Brandon Suffolk County Council don't see it as a problem. We see it as a problem, they don't. They will not put a TRO in unless they are convinced. All I can suggest, Chairman, and you've got good intentions, we've all got good intentions here, is that we take this away, we do some more work on it. We don't commit ourselves on it tonight because this is really outside of our powers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tina first and then councillor Bland.
Um, I, I don't know a great deal about the, um, history of this, but has there been a public consultation?
No.
No, I mean, so I mean, that's something that's fairly easy for the council to do. Maybe have people sort of like, um, um, take turns on the market or do an online thing. Um, because you can match people against the residency. And maybe that's something that could potentially be influential for Suffolk because it'd be actually, you know, the residents speaking as well as just the councillors. So, and maybe that's something to consider as part of your plan moving forward.
Thank you, councillor Bland.
Um, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I've been doing a little bit of research on this. Um, and August twenty twenty four, House of Commons, library, uh, the info on TROs, stage traffic regulation orders are used by local councils to regulate traffic in their areas under powers, part one, two and four of the road traffic regulation. Um. Purposes including restrict, restricting the use of heavy commercial vehicles, parking restrictions, parades, events, et cetera. And also goes on to say, um, a permit, again, under local councils. Uh, the res- the reasons for doing this can be varied, to permit a road to be used for a parade, event or a street party resident, uh, or to protect resident, residents from rat running. Um, and protect the road from the weight of heavy vehicles. But, um, it's local council does that, we local council.
Local council Suffolk, Suffolk.
Depending on the legislation, there should be a prefix in that that will explain what local councils is. I suspect that that is local authorities because that's designated to county. And so in this instance, in this legislation, local councils will either devolve it down to county.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I can't see that, but.
It will be in the very interesting bit at the very beginning of the actual legislation.
Yeah, a bit odd and odd, no.
You fellow's true.
Yeah, yeah.
So that is it in a nutshell. We can get the evidence, we can see if there's a, a feeling in the town that that would be a good thing or not. You know, it may well be that councillor Leucanick and I and, and can, uh, former councillor Palmer before got it all wrong.
My main worry is our local businesses. We don't want to lose our local businesses.
We don't want to lose our local businesses. Councillor.
Let me just clarify this business about local, local HGV users. When they put an HGV ban in place, the local businesses request a permit. They get a permit and they are entitled to come through the town without any penalties. And that's all picked up on an ANPR system. The cameras will pick up who's breaking the law and the cameras will pick up who's not breaking the law. So your answer is Lignocite, Travis Perkins, all the lorry users on the industrial side, anybody locally, Tesco's articulated units, they can come in. All we need to do is make a case for Suffolk County Councils. And one thing hasn't been mentioned, traffic regulation orders are hellishly expensive because it goes out for public consultation. I don't think we're in a position to vote for a TRO tonight. That's how I'm reading it, I stand to be corrected, thank you, Chairman.
We are not issuing a TRO, we are not a traffic authority. Suffolk highways are. Suffolk highways to date have not had, they've been totally lukewarm, they've given, given, they've come and see, to see you, me and Palmer. But we've got nowhere with them. This is a different approach, a council-wide approach, a town-wide approach, if you like. If we haven't had a consultation and sixty percent or seventy percent of those surveyed say, yes, I would like it, that's a lot more weight put towards our case. So I think it is a well worthwhile thing to do. And as I said right at the, the beginning, there's no, no guarantee of success. But if we can get Suffolk highways to look at this, the only way we will do so is by putting town pressure on them. I think as far as it's gone so far, they just think that you self-councillor Leucanick and I are a couple of pests and they would rather us go away. And they just discount us, so that's why it's here. So I would like to, yes councillor.
Just one, just one quick thing, looking through the same document and perhaps, and I'm just throwing this out there because I, 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 I know what it's, it's but what relevance. Um, TROs, uh, funding types, TRO supported with highways, local funding, according to this, there's a TRO budget within local highways?
Yes, there is, there is. And, um.
I don't know how much it is though, sorry.
I don't know how much it is.
And I suspect they normally do five year platter rounds on highways.
Mm-hmm. It says typical cost ten to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, typical cost is about ten to fifteen thousand. And my view is that if, if after we've done all this process, Suffolk highways come back and say, well, no, it's the cost and monitoring the cameras, well, hold on. What if we pay the cost and we buy the cameras and have them installed? West Suffolk District Council already monitors cameras in Brandon, at the top floor of Su- uh, of West Suffolk House. They are an enforcement authority too, so they can issue fines. What's wrong with them taking off and watching our AMPR cameras? Oh, if, if they hadn't got to sit there and watch the thing all the time, it's not like somebody's there glued to a screen. The little computer thing being bummed, like, Asda just drove through your high street. And they shouldn't be there. They swing off a fine to them. So the, the process, the, the, the structure's already there. And this was one of the arguments that Suffolk highways came up with. Oh, well, there's nobody to look after the cameras, well, yes, there can be. So it's, I think, worth going for. Um, as I say, we may well get to a situation where we think, let's look at this again, no, the, the, the town doesn't really want it, you know, there's too many people with a view like Linda, um, that it could be more damaging than good. And we can drop it, but at least then we will know. Peter Richwell.
Yeah, yeah, I agree that we've got this traffic problem. But the high street is an A road. Ten seventy-five.
Doesn't matter.
I can't see how local authority will agree in closing the high street to heavy goods vehicles as it's an A road.
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the documents when the A eleven was dueled, the approved route was Munford roundabout, if they were coming from Norfolk, Kings Lynn, that they come down through Munford to the roundabout, to the A eleven. That was the approved route.
That's it, to Gallows Hill and down to Sainsbury's roundabout, yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the way they're supposed to.
And they just ignore it because they can get across the B road, Berry Road, through Elverdon, they haven't got to stop there on that dogleg for the old A eleven. An artist couldn't cross there without getting hit. Now they can just fly through and that's the biggest problem.
Yeah, I've seen the signs on the A eleven.
They come from Lincolnshire, North Norfolk, they're going to London, they're going to the south east, they're going to Felixstowe. And they use us as a rat run. And it, yeah, I agree, it is an A road. But we had a, a, a traffic regulation order on our A road only a few weeks ago to close it for the Remembrance Day Parade, so yes, we can put TROs on A roads.
Yeah, that was only.
Yeah, I know, but the principle's the same. The principle's the same. So anyway, I'm not going to waste any more time on this. I would like to put it to the table. Do we agree with moving ahead as I, um, Tina have, have outlined, or do we not? So could I have a show of hands of those in favour, please?
Chairman, do you have any idea of cost? Is there a cost to this?
Um.
Are we committing to something and we've got no idea of cost? Um, I, I find it bizarre.
Yeah, we've got money.
We've hardly, we've hardly done any work on this, I haven't done any work on this.
No, I have and Tina has.
Well, hang on Phil, you're on Transport East. You mix with the people at the top of Suffolk County Council. Have you had a word with them at Transport East about ACV issues in Brandon as you sit on Transport?
You know very well I have.
Give me some names who you've spoken to.
You know very well I have.
Give me some names.
No, I'm not giving you names here, I'm cutting this conversation short.
There you go.
So you are not going to control this meeting councillor Leucanick.
Well, I've just asked them for names.
Thank you, can I hand over to Tina, please?
There is concern around the table, understandably, about the potential outcomes of this. So in this instance, I think that potentially there could be an amendment to that in that further research is done, taking into consideration the, um, concerns that are being displayed around the table. And if people could write those in and, and that potentially of, maybe some form of consultation should be done prior to coming back so we know the actual structure of what the people of Brandon would like to see in that consult, in that TRO. Because at the moment, we're, what we're very journalistically saying is people think that we should move forward in looking at what is involved in the issue. And I think actually that needs to be nailed down because there's been some new viewpoints brought to the table that, you know, deserve good consideration. So, so maybe, um, councillor Leucanick is right in the fact that there should be a deferral to allow all these concerns to be brought in and a public consultation to be done in order to determine what the residents would like to see within those TROs and, and all those concerns can be reflected within that.
I'm certainly very happy with that, so.
So you can, that's just up to you to defer.
Could I just ask one thing? In the consultation, could it be, um, said that the businesses who are local in Brandon, i.e. Lignocite, Travis Perkins, all the big companies, still will be able to use those roads? It's the, 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 the outsiders, yes.
That, that is within our gift.
Yes, yeah, that, that's the one thing that really concerns me.
That is within our gift.
I think that's part of the development of moving forward.
Yeah.
Because obviously if we're going to ask questions, councillors would want to view those before they went out to public consultation. Because obviously you're the people that everybody is going to ask about the questions that go into the consultation.
But we don't want to make decisions that's going to upset local businesses.
No.
Where Brandon will go down, will go down the drain.
I think it's very reasonable to defer and to get everybody to.
I would be happy with that, absolutely, I would be happy with that.
I am too, yes.
If the chair is happy to defer.
I would defer then on that basis.
Sorry, pop up set the apple, oh, a little bit done.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Sorry.
I will defer on that basis, but then can I ask you to write in to Tina all those who are expressing and even those that are thinking, your views and to start to see your constituents in your, in your wards and gain, gain a view? Because it, it, it means, as I said, up until now, it's just been councillor Leucanick and myself and when councillor, um, Palmer was here, it was him as well. And I, as I really do believe, the highways department would rather we weren't elected next time because we're just a pain in their bum. And they would like us to go away. But the lorries are still there and we're passionate about the welfare of Brandon.
But the government get the highway, they won't need HGVs, it's a bit drone stripping everything.
Okay, so that item, uh, fifteen and sixteen have been deferred. Uh, item seventeen, Plaques update.
Yeah, so there's, um, there's, like I say, a lot of the items, I think I was already so I thought. So, um, first of all, I think I'll go back to start with Christmas lights switch on. It was a really important meeting and, and events much enjoyed by our residents and people from further afield a boost to our social economy promoting that sense of place ownership that is granted to strong community cohesion. A huge thank you and welcome to the team for the hard work, it was fantastic event. And of course to those councillors who attended to support the event and those who went the extra mile as elves. More costumes will be available next year, so just tell me what you want to be. And we're good. Um, I think that councillors and staff seen working together is a very positive view for our, our residency. Um, health and safety inspections were carried out on the Walk and Ward and Works yard, so as soon as I can, um, get those reports in, they will be worked through and a plan put together to address any issues. However, the good news is, is there knows no urgent issues that we call attendance, so that's good news. And prosperity fund, uh, we had site meetings on the jetty side and plans and applications for permissions are being drawn up and sent to the Environment Agency and Suffolk County Council. Um, been working with councillor Seber, um, at the RBL and Brandon Creative Forum to look at creating a crafty warm space. Um, happening in the new, new year where people can get a cuppa and help sign and make hangings that will support medieval festival in the orchard in the summer. More details when we have them, watch this space, you'll feel, I can tell. So, um, also on the information boards. So, um, also on the information boards that are part of that, um, with, um. The information has been collated, there's been the information boards. People can manage it on both the maltings and the orchard, but the orchard is the priority. Um, so currently getting passes and designs to go forward for that. Um, and we'll be looking at the heritage and education once the jetty development process is finished. The other thing about notice four, to just bring up that council may want to consider replacing the damaged town information board. That was highlighted after councillor Bland kind of cleaned them all, all eight, didn't you? And one of them is pretty stuffed up there, isn't it? Fairly unread.
Yeah, it looks like it's, looks like my head bonfire under it.
Oh, right, yeah, that's pretty bad.
Yeah.
So potentially maybe if there's any underspending in the year, that would be something council will want to consider. Um, replacing because the other seven are all gleaming and new and shiny. But yeah, so uh, obviously mentioned about the tree, I believe we're getting a delivery date. Um, this. Next week, I think it is. Yeah, and actually about the, about the table, interestingly, they weren't supposed to deliver it till tomorrow. So I think it was a bit surprised to the team, but luckily that's, that all went well. And if that happens, the thing of beauty is.
It is a thing of beauty and thanks to councillor Leucanick for his assistance there because we were able to. Get the lorry to drop it. I mean, the thing weighs a ton, literally nine hundred kilos, it's almost a ton. Um, uh, with, uh, uh, great thanks to John Conorden and his team developing the Bindo Ball site. They actually had an all-terrain, um, forklift there, um, under. Uh, with, with councillor Leucanick, they managed to move it into situation. So thank you to councillor Leucanick for that and thank you to John Conorden.
And that was financed by Suffolk County Council.
And it was financed by Suffolk County Council. Thank you, which was part of councillor Leucanick's, um.
Locality fund.
Locality fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those kind words.
You took me to love the lorry band in force, wasn't it?
Right. On that note, I will move to a resolution number eighteen, which is to exclude the public and the press that pursuant to the public's obvious. Admissions to meetings that nineteen sixty, the public and press be excluded from the meeting temporarily. Due to the confidential nature of the business to be discussed, which concerns quotes, land, staff or contract. I therefore close this part of the meeting and thank all the members of the public very muchly and thank you for coming.